Welcome everybody. My name is John Fagan and I'm the CEO at Scribe and I'll be hosting you today along with my colleague Jess Shapley, Wave Jess, there you are. And then our guest speaker Mark Tompkins. So without further ado, I'm going to hand over to you, Mark.
That's fantastic, John. Thanks very much. If I can just check, make sure that everybody can hear me, just a few jazz hands on a Tuesday morning would be good. Thanks very much. Thank you. Okay, so John, thank you for that very kind introduction. Just to add to that in terms of website accessibility expertise. I am also the author of the Nalke Website Accessibility Handbook, it was published by Nalke back in September. We have many hundreds of parish and town councils as clients who we provide website accessibility advice, guidance and services for. So the advice and information I'm going to give you today comes from a good number of years firsthand and essentially helping the local government sector lead pack, lead the way in terms of web accessibility. I'm going to share my screen now. We've got a lot of slides that I'm going to go through. Some of them will probably skip through in the first instance because it's a bit of a, how can I say, a bit of a refresher. So what are we going to do today? We're gonna, I'm gonna help give you some advice in terms of getting your website compliant and keeping it compliant. Quick backdrop, as you all know, since 2020, September 2020, all parish and town councils must comply with the accessibility regulations. And that is that the website must comply with something called WICAG 2.1 AA. It's a set of standards by which accessibility online is measured. Now, I appreciate there are some people who are still yet to start the journey and there are some people who are on the journey. So hopefully today's tips and guidance are going to be helpful to all. One of the things that I would say is that if the last two years have shown us anything, it's that a parish and a town council's website has been absolutely champion in terms of helping get information out to the community. It has been the go-to place and I think that we aren't in this sector going to go back from that. I'm a parish councillor in my private life of 11 years and we would, we would have really struggled in terms of access, of being able to communicate with our community, had we not had a fully accessible website to be able to communicate to everyone. So look, from a communication tool perspective, the website is absolutely primary. The idea behind accessibility is to make sure that everybody in your communities has access to the information they are entitled to. One in five people, you've probably seen this stat before, but one in five people in every community has a disability or a situation that makes it difficult for them to access information online from a website that isn't allowing for people with disabilities, one in five. So in your head, work about, work out what size of your community is and then work out 20% of that. That's a lot of people. So what we're going to cover, we'll press pause just for a second. There's a lot to cover when it comes to website accessibility. So I'm going to be going through essentially the core elements and some tips and guidance as the way we go through. So what are the, the key aspects of it? Well, headings, headings of pages are important and how the text is formatted, page structure. So has the website's framework been set up to work with it for accessible nature? Link formatting, when you link the things, how you treat images, video, the accessibility of documents and file formats. How you check on a day-to-day basis, how do you check for accessibility? Also things like setting up a checking process and maintaining the accessible compliance as well as maintaining compliance with transparency code. Because let's not ignore that. We've got to be doing that. We've got to make sure that we're publishing all of the things that we are required to do so under the transparency code, slightly a larger pile for those of you with a larger preset. So quick refresher, since September 2020, it's been law. There's been a lot of organisations who have tried to use disproportionate burden as a, I think it's fair to say as a reason not to do it, but it isn't the right approach. This is about changing attitude. The people in your community who have a disability have the right to access the content online. So it is the right thing to do and they must be able to access the information without barriers. It better communication, better engagement, inclusive and fair. That's usually how I discuss it. So most common accessibility fail points are how the website's been constructed. Websites are not natively accessible just because it's been built recently. In fact, I would say that for the most part, they can't and won't be. Because you have to have a website briefed specifically to include accessibility as part of it. So if you've commissioned a website, but accessibility compliance to WICAG 2.1 AA was not part of the brief, it is unlikely to comply. One of the reasons why I put the next bullet point right at the top is this is a, this is a bit of a worry, something that we've seen across the whole local government sector, get more and more, and that is the use of accessibility plugins. What do I mean by that? I mean, when you go to a website and you see one of these little circles or dots that appears on the homepage, it's usually a little symbol of a, an outline of a person or something like that. And it says accessibility, you can press it and it adjusts font sizes and colours. These are not compliant. They are not WICAG 2.1 AA compliant. In fact, we have worked closely with Scope, one of the UK's biggest charities for people with disabilities. And they support and have written articles on their website that explains that these accessibility plugins actually create more barriers than that they solve. They are not a solution to meeting your legal compliance. So what's important to remember is if you have one of those on your website, you need to consider changing that. It is not going to help you. We'll come back to that in a minute. Tables. I know historically, as I've said, I'm a councillor of quite a few years now and produced an awful lot of council documents. We have always all historically used tables to produce nice documents, neatly formatted minutes and agendas. However, the problem with tables is that there's no navigation. You've got columns and rows, but they rely on site. There is no way to navigate through the columns and the rows in the correct order. Tables are only for numerical data. They are not for the formatting of text. So you must try your hardest to avoid the use of tables. A good guidance for you really is around, how do I replace tables with something that helps with formatting? Well, over in my parish and also many hundreds of other parishes and towns, we've moved over to numerical bullet points. Bullet points, you might think, oh, well, that's, that's a bit boring, but it keeps everything neat. It keeps everything following numerical order. And it obviously allows you to maintain your page count for the ongoing accumulation of minutes and agendas, the, the document number. I would strongly recommend that you look at stopping the use of tables unless it is purely for the use of numerical information. And look to either numerical bullet points or figurative bullet points for the formatting of your minutes and agendas and those kinds of documents. Now, talking about documents, accessible documents, there's a lot of information out there about this. The gold standard, gold standard is to have all of the content on your webpages actually defined out on the page. So if you're going to do minutes and agendas, for example, you have headings in the correct sequential order and the text on the webpage. That's gold standard. It isn't always possible. The reason why we do that is because HTML, a webpage is the, is the format that works absolutely perfectly with assistive technology, people who use screen readers and such like. It isn't always possible, but that's what you should be aiming for. The next level really is, and that's, this is the one that the majority will be able to achieve, is an accessible PDF. The way to get to an accessible PDF is to make sure that your source document, your Microsoft Word document has been checked for accessibility first before you save it as a PDF. Now, versions of Microsoft Word since 2016 come with an inbuilt accessibility checker. It's under the review tab and you can just turn it on down the right hand side. It'll show you all the things that may or may not be accessible. It'll also tell you how to fix them. And at one point it'll give you a green tick and it'll say this document, it'll say no accessibility issues. You can then safely go to file and save as, save it as a PDF and it is an accessible PDF. You can safely add that to your website. I would always add that, the next bullet point, make sure that you get into an accessible document file name process. What do I mean by that? I mean, when you're naming your documents, follow the principle of who, what, when. Who? For example, Eton Bray Parish Council or EBPC. What? Minutes. When? April 2022. The reason for that is so that when the document is, is come across by any user, not just those with disabilities, it is very clear what the document is about. Accessibility isn't just a technical aspect. It is also about content and how you word stuff. So if you call your file names exactly what they are, it means that you are reducing the barrier. I know that historically we have all labelled documents according to how you file them. But that's only any use to you. It's no good to end users. People don't know your file naming culture and structure. So if you're adding it to the website, follow the principle of who, what, when. This leads me on to page content formatting. What do I mean by that? Well, I mentioned headings previously. Headings, you may use already in your Word document production, but they, the process translates well across to a webpage. Headings can be structured into H1, H2, H3, H4 and so on. Now, very often and historically, we have all chosen headings on our pages by how they look, not what number they are. The problem with how they look is that's then limited to people with sight. The purpose of headings, both in Word documents and on webpages, is to provide content sequence. So for example, on a webpage, the H1, the heading one is the page's title. That only appears once. You should not use H1 at any other time. And the reason for this is that for people who use screen reading software, so people with sight loss and sight disabilities, headings are a page navigation for them. Rather than have to have their computer audibly read the entire webpage to them, only for them to get to the last paragraph, which might be the bit they want to listen to, or a particular part in the document, they can't see the document to scan read it. So they have to rely on the headings of the page. So they're breaking the content of your webpage up into headings that are sequential, heading two, heading three and so on. It means that their software allows them to skip to those sections on the page. So if you've got a really long page, rather than them have to wade through a lot of text, which might be a real challenge for them or have it read to them, which might take a good few minutes, properly head, properly sequen, sequencing your headings will allow them to jump through it. It's a really good technique to get to grips with, both in terms of website accessibility, but also translates well into a Word document. Just as a, as a side exercise, if you visit aubergine262.com and you go to our blog, on there, there is a blog article that provides some exercises and examples for you to follow for heading formatting. Another aspect of page content formatting issues when it comes to accessibility are fonts, sizes and colours. This might be an obvious one, but it is one that we still see a problem over and over. So best practices, do not use coloured text. Avoid coloured text. Avoid the formatting. So I know again, historically, we have all used bold, bold un, bold italic, bold underline to try and emphasise a particular point. Try and avoid that because it creates problems, particularly underlining. Underlining is, is misleading because actually underlining some text indicates that it's a link, but of course it wouldn't go anywhere. So avoid using great long lines of bold text or italic text and underline text. Use bold to pick out a few words. Avoid using coloured text. If you want to use colour, it needs to make sure that when you're on your webpage, you have good contrast with colours. So avoid using pastel colours, use stronger colours that are strong against white so that you can have black or very dark grey text on white, much like my, my presentation page, right? As you see here, I've got colour on it, but I've also got black and grey. But it's clear and open. The text is open, the font sizes, again, keep an eye on font sizes. As a general rule, anything smaller than 14 pixels will be a bit too small. Most people who have, who use assistive technology, if they're interacting with a website that's been built with accessibility in mind, it will allow them to adjust the webpage to increase their font sizes and contrast to suit their own requirements. If it's not been coded with accessibility at heart, they won't be able to do that. Another aspect of, of fail points are link text. Now, this is a, this is a very common one. What do I mean by link text? I mean a link if you're going to go to a webpage or a link if you're going to go to a document. Historically, lots of link text has been click here, read more, download here. The problem with that is the links are then out of context to a person who has a disability. They don't know where click here, read more, here is going to go. You should be making your link text descriptive. Describe where it is going to go. So if, if on the webpage, you're going to link to the Bedford Chamber of Commerce, for example, your text would say, your link text would say Bedford Chamber of Commerce website and the link would sit behind that. So if you, if you are going through the process of reviewing your website accessibility right now, check for all of those links, make sure there's no click here's, read more's, downloads here's and change that link text to something that describes where it's going to go or what it's going to open. If it's going to be a link that opens the minutes or agenda document, make sure that the link text says minutes April 2022. What would be even better gold standard, and we like to aim for gold standard, is in brackets, add PDF as well, because that then tells the person what the file format is. For super gold stars, after PDF, add the size of the file. I'll explain the reason why. There are lots of reports where people have uploaded neighbourhood plans or, or town plans or design documents that are 100 megabytes in size, but of course, if you don't tell the user that it's a thumping great document and somebody goes to try and open it from their phone or they're on a slow internet connection or even a metered internet connection, until they start to open it, might not even be the document they want, but they've already rinsed 100 megs of data. So for super gold standard, the descriptive link of the text, the format, PDF and its size, 1.2 megabytes. Another aspect to also remember, which I'm sure many of you are already aware of, is images. It's okay to use images on websites, but what you must do is provide a good alternative textual description for it. So what is good? What is a good alt text to use? Let's just say we're going to upload a picture of my coffee cup here. Okay, so it's a, it's a Pantone, Pantone coffee cup in green. Adding the alt text for this would be green Pantone coffee mug, short descriptive. Do not add a alt text that is mug. Check it as well to make sure that the alt text of your image hasn't just been pulled from the file name and the file name is DSC1375.jpg. We see this every week of every month when we perform accessibility scans, where photos and images have been uploaded from people's phones and cameras and it's just maintained the file name that came off the device and of course the alt text will be getting from that. So you can define, if you are uploading an image that is just purely decorative and it brings nothing to the party in terms of the content of the webpage, it could be an icon, it could be a graphic, it could be a stock library photo. Leave it blank, no alt text, leave it completely blank because that will tell the screen reader of the person who's using it with assistive technology, it'll, 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 in fact, it won't even tell them there's an image there. It'll allow them to just skip straight through it. The last thing they need is barriers. So keep an eye on your image alt text. The next thing that I want to talk about is navigation, dropdown menus and so on and so forth. These are, these are fundamentally at the heart of a website's framework. They're going to be really difficult for you to change. So talk to your website developer, but as a general rule, those menu systems will need to be more recently made because they are unlikely to comply. They're going to be really fiddly as well. A tip to avoid are double dropdowns. By that, I mean when you mouse over on a menu point, you get a dropdown. And when you go to one of those, it then pops out the side. Those are quite difficult from a, a dexterity perspective. We recommend having something called a mega nav. So mouse over, you get a large menu that's got columns in it. Now, the other one that I want to talk about, which I mentioned earlier on is about accessibility plugins. Pop-ups and news feeds. So a lot of people ask us to integrate newsletter pop-ups. So sign up to our newsletter and the pop-up appears. You've probably experienced it yourself or news feeds from third-party services like Twitter or Facebook. These will not pass accessibility. So adding a pop-up is just going to get in the way of somebody who uses assistive technology, they're not going to be able to interact with the navigation. There's a really good chance they won't even be able to clear the pop-up out of the way. So don't use pop-ups. Those things, often pop-ups, are more about the website owner wanting to stuff information in front of the user than about what the user wants. If it's an important message, put it on the webpage. Don't put it as a pop-up. In relation to those news feeds or feeds from things like Facebook and Twitter, Facebook and Twitter have no obligation to comply with website accessibility. So if you introduce those feeds, it will break the accessible nature of the webpage. So don't use them. The whole, the whole idea of social media is you should use those channels to drive people to your website. Don't give them a reason to leave. Just as a point of fact, Twitter is actually the only social media channel that has an official feed service. Facebook and many of the others are unofficial, so you shouldn't really be using them anyway. I know that very often people say, oh, but it adds richness to the website, makes like stuff's going on. It's fine to have regular content going on, on your social media channel, but you should be using that to drive your, your, your users to your website. The website is the point of sale in marketing speak. So colours and contrast are the next thing that I want to talk about, which I mentioned earlier on. High contrast is important here. You might imagine that there's some obvious colours to avoid. There are, there are some really obvious colours to avoid. Red is one of them and also some very pale pastel colours. So it's important to make sure that the colours that you use on your website in terms of blocks and the areas meet a good high level of contrast and check. What I want to do now is I'm going to show you our checking methods. I'm just going to stop the screen share for a second. Here we go. And I'm going to share my browser. Let's just do that now. There we go. So you guys should now be able to see the Newton and Nos Parish Council website we built for them. Thanks for, for confirmation, John. So what you're looking at here is, is a new fully accessible website. There's the example of that mega nav that I talked about, multiple columns, very accessible. One of the best things that you should do if you have not done so already is in your browser, whether you use Google Chrome, whether you use Microsoft Edge, whether you use Firefox, you should install the Wave by WebAim checker. It's a free extension. Okay, just go into Google and type Wave by WebAim. And it will allow you to pop in a free little checker that appears in your browser up here. So on my screen now, you'll see this little grey W up here. So I'm on this, this council website and I'm going to press this bang. There we go. What that does is it gives me an instant check on the webpage. Now, obviously there are no errors because we built the site. There's a couple of alerts here. So if I go to details, you can see they are, they are not fail, fail points. They are things to just be aware of. So over here, we've got, it, it's saying two alerts, redundant links. Well, the redundant links are, are, is actually the, the homepage link. Strictly speaking, you shouldn't need to have a homepage link because if your site has been set up correctly, your logo will be also a link to the homepage. But it has become quite acceptable to have a homepage link. It's not a fail point. So as you can see here, popping this, this in here will give you a really good feedback. Now, this will only allow you to do one page at a time, which is very good, especially if you're on a, if you're in a parish and you're on a budget. There are paid for services and the paid for services, such as Pope Tech, these are the ones that we use, will allow you to run a scan on the entire website and it will give you a full report on every page. Now, they need to be configured particularly. They aren't cheap services, but if you have budget and you want to be able to do something like that, you should look at Pope Tech. They are one of the best. There are a couple of others out there. One of them's called DEQ. That's D E Q U E. But a lot of these do come with, with a bit of a punchy price tag. I would say that on the whole, if you use the Wave by WebAim tool for your website, you won't go far wrong. Now, that deals with the website itself, but what it doesn't deal with is document accessibility. So the documents that you add to the website, the PDFs for the most part. You will need to check those before you upload them to the website. Now, if you've produced the document in Microsoft Word and you've run the inbuilt checker, then you have nothing to worry about. You do not need to check the document. However, if you've been given a document by another member of the council, it's important that you run that PDF through a checker. Now, in the document, in the, the, the presentation notes that I'll provide, that John will, will send out to you, there'll be a link to a set of resources for lots of different PDF checkers, website checkers, okay? And there'll be one that you can upload a PDF to and it will provide you with a instant report on how accessible that PDF is. Some of you may have heard of it. It's called Ting-Tong. But there are a number of, number of others out there. But like I say, if you make sure that your web, your Word document is set up to go review. In fact, do you know what, John? Have I got a couple more minutes?
Yes, for sure.
Thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna open a Word document and I'm gonna show you all. So look, here we go. Let me just make sure that my screen is sharing the right, whoops. Can you see my Word document?
No.
Okay, let's just stop the screen and share it again. Should be able to now.
Yes.
There we go. Okay, so here's, this is, this is where, this is where I'm a councillor, but you can see there, vice chair for my sins. But if I just minimise that for now, here we go. So up in the top menu here, you've got review. And then down here, you've got check accessibility. Now, many people don't actually know this is even here. So I'm going to press that, check accessibility. Now, over here on the right-hand side, there we go. No accessibility issues found. So I can now safely go file, save as PDF and it's an accessible PDF. So what would I be doing there? Well, I would call this document because it is the December 2020 minutes. it is the December twenty twenty minutes. I would call this E B P C December. Sorry, E B P C minutes, December twenty twenty. And I would put in brackets PDF, even though the suffix is there, and I would put in size. I know it's sixty two kilobytes. There we go. If I save that on my computer like that, when I upload it to my website, I don't need to change anything because it's all done. If however, I changed this to perhaps a light colour. Let's just say I chose that. There we go. Change it to a nice blue that matches our council logo. But instantly over on my right-hand side, you see accessibility, hard to read text. Okay, it's found the text for me and then it explains here, steps to fix. So I'm just going to change that back to black or dark grey. Boom. Accessibility issue is gone. I strongly recommend, and as you can see here, we've gone for numerical points for each of the items. And it means that it's just that save that. There we go. It means that the document that you produce will be good for you. You can search for it on your computer, but it also means that when you add it to your website, you know you can do that, safe in the knowledge. So quick recap. Headings. Make sure that the headings on your webpages and on your web or on your documents follow a sequential order. Good colours, colours, good contrast. Don't use tables. When you're creating a PDF, check it with Word first. When you're uploading images, make sure they've got a good descriptive alt text. Don't use tables unless it's numerical data only. It's okay to use an X an Excel document and create a PDF from the Excel document. It's a Microsoft Office Suite document, so have accessibility built into it. And try and avoid using or uploading Word documents and Excel documents and definitely PowerPoint documents to your website because you're creating a barrier. It requires the user to have a Microsoft Office subscription in order to open it. That in itself is a barrier. And finally, have a checking process. Use the Wave by Web Aim browser checker. It's free and it will give you an excellent report per page. If you're looking for something a little bit better than that in terms of the whole site at a time, we recommend Pope Tech. That's the one we use. So look, I I hope this has been useful. I'm going to share the document the document that I've gone through today. Actually, there's about thirty pages as part of it with lots of tips in there. So, John, I'm going to share that with with you so that the audience can have access to that as well. There'll be some useful tips and resources in that document, but I think probably be useful if I can perhaps answer some questions soon.
Yes, cool. We'll go on to questions in a minute. Thanks a lot, Mark. Actually, I think all those guidelines actually just improve the simplicity of how you communicate. So it actually benefits cited people as well, you know, able people because you know, you simplify your communication because it's so easy now with modern ways to communicate with technology and multimedia content to get carried away with fancy ways to present it. But then, you know, that can confuse a lot of people. So yeah, it's really interesting. I look forward to hearing some of the questions. So just for the next few minutes, I want to give you a bit of an overview of Scribe. For some of you that may not be aware, we're actually a company that's been operating for quite a while. And we acquired the business in twenty sixteen. Originally, Scribe was focused on smaller parishes, but now we're growing seventy five percent year on year and we've now got, you know, originally when we acquired it, had under two hundred customers, got over eight hundred customers now and we've expanded our product portfolio. And also now we're servicing not only small parish councils, but also larger town councils. Really, our why we exist is just to enable local communities such as town and parish councils, which is our focus right now, to spend more time engaging their community and less time impacting it. And one of our great, we ask our customers, what do you do with your extra time since using Scribe? And this Sally just gave us the perfect answer. So we use her 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 answer a as a great example because she's spending less time administering it. She spent more time learning about obtaining grants. She was able to gain those grants and her precept is sixteen thousand pounds and she was able to get grants to fifty two thousand pounds, which is massive success story for us. And with that money, she was able to have climate change impacting improvements to her buildings and as well as extend the hours on her community cafe and start employing local youngsters. So, you know, Clark life at Scribe, we feel like, you know, our mission is to really reduce your isolation, we support you, improve your productivity, reduce your workload with that productivity improvements and as a result, your stress and increase your skills. And in in actually, a big point is often clerks are changing all the time. So we can help you get started in your new clerking job or we can give business continuity for the councillors when their clerk leaves and we can onboard that new clerk. We can enable you to increase modernisation of your of your your council, increase your revenue and ultimately that enables you to have a greater impact on your local community. So how do we do that? There's two key things. One is these purpose-built cloud apps that we produce specifically designed for administering local councils. We currently have four for managing accounts, which is kind of our core product. And then we have the add-ons with managing your cemetery, managing your allotments, which is just released, and then also venue hire, which improves your revenue generation for that. And all our apps come with unlimited users, free training and support, free integrations on the accounts, free year-end assistance and a process. And we don't lock you in. It's very easy if you we don't actually have many customers. Our churn is very, very low. But if you wanted to, it's very easy to export your data from our systems if you want to move on. So we we don't lock you in. The other area we enable clerks to have a better life at Scribe is our training and thought leadership. So you're on this guest, you know, we've got Mark coming along as a guest speaker. He's giving you, we call it thought leadership in training you, but we also have weekly events for our customers on all aspects related to, you know, managing accounts, allotments, cemeteries and venue hire. They're going on every week, yeah, just to support you. So Scribe Academy is, you know, with our product, you know, enables you to have a better experience of clerking. Our support is really, I would say it's world-class. You know, we've had one award. If you look at, I'll just move on to here. Our net promoter score, which is a great score to indicate how customers are likely to recommend it, is seventy seven point seven on the right-hand side there. The industry average is thirty, so we're very proud of that. We get back to any questions you have within the same day. Seventy five percent of the time within two hours at the moment, even when it's quite busy right now. And yeah, we have a lot of great customer ratings and reviews. So we're really proud of that. And not only beyond, you know, we try and support the community beyond our actual customers, such as what we do at Scribe Academy. And also we recommend, you know, going to these Facebook groups where, you know, there's all kinds of clerks and councillors on that, but you know, a lot of them aren't our customers. Go along there, they're very active. Any questions that you have are there. So if you want to know more about us, head on over to Scribe and request a demo, type chat, yes, in the chat and we can we can arrange a chat. But yeah, that's just a little bit off Scribe. So we're over to the questions now. Feel free. It'd be great if you can, you know, turn on your video and ask a question. You can raise your hand. And then I'll ask you to ask a question. So we've got Charlotte there. Charlotte.
In the presentation, but I noticed on your minutes, you've got the headings in capitals. Is that is there any differentiation between differentiation between capitals? Is it is it better to use them or not?
A question, Charlotte. Thank you. Capitals are okay to use, but not great big, you know, whole sentences. You can use them, but sparingly. As a general rule, when you're talking about large blocks of text, you should use normal sentence case.
Any more questions? Jennifer, the deadlifter.
Hi, I'm sorry. So from what you've said, if I make sure I use the correct headings and formatting and I do the accessibility checker on my word documents, which I've had to take, we've we've got a non-sighted councillor, so I've had to take everything out of tables. But she's still saying she can't read the PDF.
Is it is it has the PDF been produced out of Microsoft Word?
Yes.
It has. And and you say you set up headings and page content.
I'm I have to because when I send her the word document, I need to make sure that you've got your heading one, your heading two, your listed paragraphs. I am religious about it.
Yeah, yeah.
She's still, when I convert it to PDF to publish it, she still says I have to convert it back to Word and send her the word documents. But I'm a little confused because she should be able to read it, shouldn't she?
She should, but obviously within the within the confines of this, without looking at the document, I I wouldn't like to say whether it's been correctly formatted or not. I'm more than happy to help you offline, Jennifer. So if you want to, my details are in the email there. So if you want in the the chat there. So if you want to just drop me an email and I'll I'll help you that's offline.
That'd be fantastic. Thank you.
Okay, no worries. Rose.
Hi. Normally, when I type up my minutes, I have number one, number two, number three, as far as apologies, planning applications, whatnot. And then under that, each individual line is A, B, C, D. But then when I try to import it, when I copy and paste into my website, which we have a company that does our website, it wants to reformat it.
Yeah.
Goes to, it leaves the one at the subtitling, but then it takes out the A, B, C, D and goes back to one, two, three, four.
Yeah.
Is that how it I should be doing it or is that?
No, 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 that is just that is just how the webpage has clearly been formatted. So so what is it by any chance? Is it based on is it a WordPress based site?
I I believe so, yes.
Okay, great. So all that means is when you copy and paste stuff, right, it copies the formatting as well. And that's a bit of a problem because Microsoft Word, without getting too technical, is actually an HTML-based application. So it's taking that stuff and when you paste it into a webpage, you've then got two different conflicting pieces of HTML. So going for numerical bullet points and what's called unordered bullet points, so squares, dots, whatever, requires a little bit of formatting. So it's okay to paste it in there, but you would then need to to select the bits that are giving the wrong type of bullet point and change the formatting with the toolbar. It requires a bit of fiddling. I mean, one of the things we do actually say is copying and pasting brings dangers. I would I would actually recommend you copy the content from your word document into Notepad, copy out of that, paste that into your webpage. And then if it requires any additional formatting within your website, then do that. It is not.
I do. I do usually go back and I'll switch I'll switch everything back, but it's so time consuming.
Yeah.
Sometimes wonder if I should just type it from scratch within the webpage.
If you have time, then obviously the gold standard is to put the content on the webpage and format it on the webpage. That's gold standard because that that is pure HTML and anybody who uses assistive technology can interact with that and so on. But obviously it brings with it an additional time element. So that's the gold standard. If you want to aim for that, then then you definitely get today's gold star.
Okay.
Any more questions? And so I I've got a question. Google Docs.
Yeah.
Yeah. So if you if you create a document in Google Docs and then you say E D F, is it, what's the accessibility?
Big fat zero. Yeah. Honestly, the best thing to do is if you're creating docs in there, save you can save it as a as a doc, you can save it as and then open it up, open it up in Word and then run the accessibility checker. There are there are some elements of accessibility to it, but I wouldn't want to rely on it.
What what about page? Is it on Mac? What's the doc word, the document?
Pages.
Pages, yeah. No, okay. Any other questions? We did, yes, Rose again.
Right. When I've tested our website for accessibility on my laptop and mobile, we do okay, we do pretty good. But I then have a phone that I've set up to have the dark background because it's better for my own visual needs. Then we have issues on the mobile if I have the black background set up because coloured headings suddenly disappear. You can't see them in black.
Yeah.
Since that is an aesthetic choice of the user, is that something that I have to take into account then and change all the colours on our webpage?
What will be happening there, Rose, is that there's an underlying style sheet for the website that that controls how it looks within the mobile experience compared to the desktop. And it sounds like just a little bit of work is needed to adjust those default colours for the mobile experience in order to maintain the correct colouring that matches the desktop version. That's that is quite a common problem. By default, a website won't necessarily retain the same colouring and styles when it goes from desktop to tablet to mobile. It needs to be told to do it. So it sounds like you need just a few little adjustments there, but I would say that if if you are aiming for mobile accessibility experience, if the you the user will have overriding control of their device. So I would set your 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 styling as basic as possible. Let them control it. Don't you deliver it for them to then have to navigate away from it. I'd I'd look at you, look at the mobile, mobile styling first.
All right. Thank you.
I have a question from Pete Burton. His microphone's not working. We use a Microsoft accessibility checker and fix any problems, then convert to PDF. When we run a PDF checker on the PDF, multiple issues arise and nothing we can do with the Word doc changes that. Is that? Have you ever experienced that?
I've I've not experienced it, but what it does tell me is that there's obviously something in those word documents that there's something in there that's triggering it. Again, I don't know what measurement tool by what standard the one that you're uploading the file is measuring it against. I know that the Microsoft one will measure against WICAG two point one, but I think Peter, if you can hear me, what I would suggest is that you've got my email address in the little chat box there. Just drop me an email. Send me send me a a couple of the files, please, as long as they're not, they don't contain any sensitive information. Send me a couple of files and a description of how you're checking them and I'll have a look for you.
Great. Any more questions? Otherwise, we'll call it a wrap and everyone, if they want to clap their hands, then thanks to Mark. I really appreciate you coming.